We've got quite a few public hearings to go through. The first public hearing is for Highway 23 North, which is changing from R1 to RR1. Is that what it is? R1 to RR1. And I'm just concerned that there's people that are outside of the back that haven't been able to get in and are wanting to attend that public hearing. If you're here for one of the vacation rentals that are coming afterwards, if a few of you wouldn't mind just sitting in the hallway so that we can make sure that we have enough room for the people that are here for the Highway 23 North, that's my main concern. I don't want anybody to feel that there isn't room or that they are not able to be heard. So...
No, I signed the amendment. Now, I signed the amendment.
It's one issue that nobody out in the hallway that wants to be a part of this public hearing that's coming up. Thank you.
Sorry.
Late. I know I'm late, but you have to start it, so. Yeah.
How many?
Forty.
Thank you for people hiding outside right now.
Hmm?
Oh, yeah, those are people you just got up.
Who are you?
Good stories on Dean Mose.
Oh, thanks.
I'd like to call this regular council meeting to order. The first item of business is a public hearing, and this is for Official Community Plan Amendment Bylaw 2134, zoning 2016-22, zoning amendment by law 2137, which is 378 Highway 23 North, Joanna Allison Lapsinoff. Before we start, I'm going to read this opening statement on public hearings, and then we'll have a brief presentation by our planner, Mrs. Strachan. This public hearing is being convened pursuant to Section 464 of the Local Government Act. At this public hearing, the public will be allowed to make representations to council, and all persons present who believe their interests are affected by the proposed bylaw shall be given the opportunity to address council or to present written submissions respecting matters contained in the proposed bylaw. Those of you who wish to speak in terms of this proposed bylaw should commence your address to council by clearly stating your name and address, then you may give us the benefit of your views concerning the proposed bylaw. Please observe the rules. If you have any concerns with the manner in which the public hearing is conducted, direct your comments to the chair. Members of council may, if they wish, ask questions of you following your presentation. However, the main function of council members today is to listen to the views of the public. It is not the function of council of this public hearing to debate the merits of the proposed bylaw with individual citizens. Everyone shall be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard at this meeting. No one will be or should feel discouraged or prevented from making his or her views heard. In considering the proposed bylaw, council has received documents which may influence its decision. These documents are available for review in a binder located at the sign and table. Before we begin, I may have the corporate officer confirm that all due process was followed according to local government acts.
Yes, Your Worship, we've received seventeen letters of support for 378 Highway 23 North. I have three letters opposed and twelve signatures on a petition from the residents of Dallas Road. Since noon, I received three letters of support that you haven't seen, and they're in support of the rezoning amendment.
We have established a speaker's list, and if you wish to address the hearing, you can ensure that your name has been placed on the list, and you can add your name for listening time. After I go through the list, I will be going out to the public for a minimum of three times. There will be lots of opportunities for the public to make comments on this public hearing. Mr. Selbig, you have a presentation for us.
Briefly. Thank you, Worship. As noted, the subject property is located at 378 Highway 23 North. The applicant is requesting the OCP amendment and rezoning amendment, or zoning by law amendment, in order to permit horticulture and farm use. You can see the property located here. To minimize the potential impact of the animal livestock, staff has requested a Section 219 covenant on title, and this would restrict the livestock, honeybees, combined total of twelve pigs, sheep, or goats, and a total of fifty fowl at any time, as well as requesting animal pens be enclosed a minimum of ten meters from the property boundary and screened from adjacent properties by use of vegetation or fencing. As proposed, the request is in line with the land use, the official community plan land use goals, and the Revelstoke Food Security Plan. I will leave it there, and if you have any questions, please.
Okay. For the people that are outside in the very back, is there anybody that's interested in this particular public hearing on Highway 23 North? If you are, I would encourage you to step inside the room. And I'll go right into the speaker's list. The first person that's indicated that wishes to speak is the applicant, and it is Allison Lapsinoff.
Speak from here?
From the foyer, yes, please.
Good afternoon, Your Worship and members of council. My name is Allison Lapsinoff. My husband John and I own the property at 378 Highway 23 North. As you know, we have applied to rezone our property from single and two-family residential to rural residential for the purpose of farming and horticultural use. While we would like to grow into a small hobby farm, giving Revelstoke another sort of local food, our immediate objective is to provide our family with food that is grown and raised organically right here on the property, and to perhaps sell locally whatever surplus we have. At the city's recommendation, we will add a covenant to the zoning stating we would be allowed a maximum of fifty fowl, but no roosters, and a combined total of twelve small livestock, such as sheep, goats, or pigs, at any given time. We're passionate about ethical, environmentally friendly, and sustainable farming, as well as eating well, making as much as possible from scratch, and reducing our dependence on corporate food producers. Over ten years ago, we were fortunate enough to be able to buy a four-acre piece of property in this amazing town. Bordered to the north and east by Mount Revelstoke National Park and to the south by an undeveloped twelve-acre parcel of land, our only neighbors are to the west across the highway and slightly below us. We understand and respect the reasons for not allowing livestock within the city of Revelstoke. However, due to the unique nature of our lot, we believe it makes an appropriate location for a small farm. We would like to address concerns regarding noise and smell. We intend to keep any livestock forty to fifty meters away from the highway on a natural bench on the property within an electric enclosure. Unlike commercially raised livestock, they would be moved around this area so as not to be festering in their own waste, causing smell and pollution. We aspire to have a small, environmentally conscious mixed-use farm where animal waste is composted in order to create rich soil for our gardens instead of the vast toxic waste lagoons and runoff common to conventional factory farms and feedlots. We hope the city council and community of Revelstoke will view our rezoning proposal in a positive light and recognize the merits of having a small mixed-use farm within the city. With the trend these days towards taking agricultural lands and using them for development purposes, we think this is a refreshing change in the opposite direction, a change many of the citizens of Revelstoke would like to see. We're very excited at the possibility of being able to contribute in a small way to Revelstoke's growing local food movement and bringing people a little closer to the source of their dinner. As our current official community plan states that the city should support locally grown food products and urban agriculture, we are hopeful that council will vote in favor of our zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person that's indicated that they wish to speak is Doug Muir.
Thank you. Thank you. I just got a brief statement here which I'll read. I sent this to the city council as well. We are ready to voice our objections to the proposed zoning amendment for this, which just ran out. The acquired neighborhood and the proposed use of this property as a farm will change that. We have received a letter from the applicant in which they tried to assuage our concerns about noise. The applicant claims they are wanting a small hobby farm for their own food usage and to sell the excess. While we applaud their attempts to lead a healthy lifestyle, their desire to have up to fifty chickens or fowl and up to a dozen pigs, sheep, or goats is far beyond what is needed to feed a family of three or four. Our concerns are based on noise, pollution, objectionable odors, and the fact that a farm across the highway will decrease our property values, as our contention that a farm of this size is better suited to a more rural environment as can be found south of the airport. In closing, let me say that we absolutely do not want this rezoning application to be approved. Thank you.
The next person that's indicated that wishes to speak is Kyle Rossick.
My name is Kyle Rossick. I'm speaking on behalf of my parents, Ray and Jackie Rossick, at 1810 Main Road across from Highway 23. A short statement. I think that the community plan as well as the food security recommendations and that found in that report are in support of this application, and I think that council and Your Worship is in support of that strategy. The approval of this application should be quite, should be supported. I know that community members in the area have voiced both support and opposition to this. I think ultimately it's for what's best for the entirety, entirety of the community, and I trust that as, as public is consulted, that that opinion will come forward and support this application.
Many members of council have any questions any time, please. You know, the next person that's indicated that wishes to speak is Peggy DeFoe. Just a reminder, folks, when you come up to the podium, please state your address for the record. Thank you.
Peggy DeFoe, I live at 1815 Dallas Road, directly across from the proposed change from residential to rural. We've lived in this residential area for over thirty years. We have spent a lot of time actually upon the property before it was bought. We just don't feel it's appropriate for farming. It's very rocky, it's very sandy, the benches are very small. Our concerns certainly are for the odor, the noise. With a small farm, you're going to have a lot of equipment running, and we've certainly been driven inside the house when John has come up with the loader to work, and has spent all day doing that. It's certainly not that we're against them or they're against us. We're not against the food initiative. It's very commendable, but it's just not the right area to do that. Imagine, if you will, your homes look across the street, and imagine how you would feel if someone was going to have fifty chickens, up to twelve pigs, goats, or sheep. I don't think anyone in a residential area would be very happy about that. There's been many supportive letters on the character for John and Allison, and that's wonderful, but these people that have written a letter really will not be affected directly as we are directly across from the property. Once it's changed to rural, it will stay as rural. People's lives change, they may move away, and we don't know what will happen now, whether they will go up to the full amount of the chickens and sheep or goats. So I really hope that you do not vote to change this area from residential to rural. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person who's indicated that wishes to speak is Sandra Ward.
My name is Sandra Ward. I live at 1810 Dallas Road, so I'm directly across from John and Allison's house. The way my property is angled, I actually would face the farm. And they're great neighbors, but we do live downhill and downwind from them, and I'm not opposed to the gardens, the honeybees, and chickens, but the proper paperwork initially we received until Allison mentioned it, there was no rooster clause, and in the initial presentation, there was no, no rooster clause. So I am opposed to the application, and I hope you do vote it down. I am worried that our property values will decrease with a farm immediately over our families. Twelve livestock with our original paperwork we received, they haven't mentioned a size that the presentation tonight could say smaller livestock. I do acknowledge that there's letters of support for Allison and reason they're wanting it. I don't have an objection to their reasoning, but the people that wrote the support do not live close by and will not be impacted, as Peggy mentioned, as we will. Terra Firma Farms did the right thing. They built out on a rural area and built their adventure out there, and this is what needs to be done. Yes, John and Allison have plenty of land, but on John's own admission, not a lot of it is farmable. So the part that is farmable is the part closest to us. So they may have four acres of land, but the portion that is farmable is the part closest to the highway, which is closest to our hands. They're great neighbors. I trust they'll do a wonderful job. My real concern is with the livestock clause and the no-rooster clause. I truly believe that there probably wouldn't be as much opposition to this if Allison and John had come to their neighbors first to say they were planning on this. We didn't find out anything about this until the packages arrived on our doorstep, and I think then they could have found out what some of the concerns were and addressed them initially. Council, I urge you to vote against this application for rezoning. Please vote as if you were sitting in our backyard having a barbecue with friends and family, and the nice breeze comes along, and you get to enjoy your dinner with the aroma of fifty fowl, twelve livestock. It's a great idea, just the wrong location. So I respectfully ask that you keep our neighborhood residential. Thank you.
Thank you. The next, the next person on the list is a maybe is Craig Kovacs.
Yeah, I'll speak.
Okay.
My name is Craig Kovacs. My resident is 1815 Dallas Road, which is just a couple of hours down from the border of the speakers. My original idea is to oppose this rezoning, and the rationale behind it is just due to the concerns over the smell as well as the decrease in property values. Just where the lot is situated, it's unfortunate because all wind typically comes down off the mountain in your residential area. You can tell that because, well, if you're wearing a stove, and it's constantly blowing, it's a cold side. With the amount of livestock, I think there would be an odor. I don't, from passing the doors, working with neighbors and stuff like that, you know, that amount of fowls as well as that amount of small farm animals do have an odor, and there is no, sorry, there is no way to kind of mitigate that and I certainly do have a bit, which would take a tremendous amount of time. And then my other concern would be what happens if they sell, what would happen if new owners came in that didn't have the same thoughts that these people in their application had put through. So I'm not opposed to the vegetation or any of the honey, it's just the animals themselves.
Thank you. Thank you. So we're here for community amendment, community plan amendment by law 2134 and zoning amendment by law 2137. This is 378 Highway 23 North. I have gone through the speaker's list, and I open it up for any comments from the public. Any comments from the public on this community plan amendment by law and zoning amendment by law? Is there any comments from the public for a second time?
I guess I do have one thing now, actually. Sorry. The one thing in the application that it said is that there would be no smell. That's great and everything, but the issue is, is smell is not a measurable thing like noise or, you know, fence height or something like that. So how bylaw would be able to actually enforce the bylaws that are put through if it did become an issue, because it's almost easier just to stop it before it happens than try and play back yet with an unmeasurable obstacle.
Staff, got any comments on that?
I'm noxious smell. So you consent to violating the saying of the noise. Is it audible? Is it noticeable? And is it defensible by that officer as being noxious? So we somewhat rely on the senses of our officers for observance as well as for sense as well as for sound to determine whether it's noxious or not, whether it can be disturbed or not.
So if it was determined, then what would happen?
It would be according to our noise and nuisance.
And if it's traced to animal part of it, then, then that would have to be removed?
Is that... There would have to be action taken. I don't know if removal would be the first action. Normally, a lot of force that we pursue, a remedy to the situation would be the issue first.
Back up to the public for any comments for a second time. Yes, sir.
Jeff Acton, 406 Robinson Avenue, Your Worship, Council. First of all, I own the adjacent oil bakers at property. We wrote a letter, and you mentioned that you had been, a few more letters of support had been given in since the noon hour that maybe you guys didn't have the opportunity to read. I was wondering if you would actually read those letters before you come to a decision?
That's up to council to decide, but once the public hearing is closed, there may be a motion on the floor to approve or deny or defer. I can't tell you what, what council will do, but we, we get the, up until noon, we cut it off electronically. Everybody gets the update, and then the letters are brought here, and the only part that's read is that if they're in support or against, so that we know how many contacts have been made to City Hall in, if they're in favor or against.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Does that answer your question?
I agree.
Any comments or questions from council? Council, please?
I have three questions of staff, and I'm wondering whether it's appropriate now, Your Worship, to ask those questions or later on?
Absolutely, it is.
All right. First question is, has bear aware who contacted with respect to that? Because I know in that particular area, I mean, it's so close to nature, it's so close to the park, the bears are around, and I don't know whether that would be a problem or not.
They have a specific, referral wasn't sent out to them specifically, but we have not received any concerns from them.
Number two?
Number two, the southern part of the property, I'm not too sure whether the gentleman that just stood up, is he the owner of that?
Yes, he is.
Is it developable? Is it, can houses there?
Mr. Acton?
Yes, sir.
Is your twelve acres developable?
It is.
And third question, if there's a problem with respect to the farm and noises and smells and that, can it come back in this program, or can it come back to council for a review and a change? Or are we, once we've made the decision to, to zone it that way, it doesn't stick?
Your Worship, the council would have a number of regulatory tools to deal with issues arising from farm operations if this was approved. If it had a commercial component, council could choose, depending on the particulars of the problem that it's creating, could enforce under its business licensing by law, under the most bylaws Mr. Strachan goes, under, if the use, say, the number of animals exceeded the permitted amount under the zoning by law. I'm not familiar with any provisions in a city by law yet that deal with nuisance such as odor, but council does have an authority to prescribe a class of activity, the emission of odor, of cluvial soot, smoke from properties as being a nuisance and creating penalties to control that. If this zoning amendment was approved, council would have the opportunity, as it would with any property at any time, to initiate on their own a zoning amendment to make it a prohibited use, but so long as, once the use is established, if it's continued, or if it's discontinued for a period of six months continuously, then that grandfathered use under the zoning that council might approve tonight would be extinguished. Otherwise, you could continue to maintain that operation as a law along with farming laws.
Counselor Salz.
Your Worship, if I can ask, Mrs. Lapsinoff, a couple of questions in relation to placement of animals and, and the crops on the property. When we, when we look at the highlighted area, that's your property there, just wondering about the animals, you mentioned a bench, is that near the back of the property? I know you mentioned so many meters in from the highway, but I'm just wondering, and just to address some of the concerns people have brought forward, if you indeed would be able to move your animals in the back area so that they can be moved around that back area? That's what I'm asking.
There's a, there's a natural bench about halfway up the property.
Okay.
That is, probably, we guessed it's about forty or fifty meters away from the property line. It's just a flat area that we thought would be appropriate for livestock. It's not right down by, I'm wondering if you ever imagine it's right down at the front of the property line? Where am I? Oh, there we are. There was a, right around here? Yeah, about halfway up. Yeah, right at the top of this road here is a natural bench that's up there.
You can see the top of the line.
Yeah. And then, so when you, I have two more questions. When you, when you deal with the manure from the animals, you'll be composting that naturally on the property at some point?
Yes.
Would that be a distance further away from the road, or have you decided at this point?
Well, at this point, we have two compost boxes that are a bit closer to the road, but we'd probably build another one up close to where the animals were kept, because that would just be simpler, and it's farther away from the neighbors.
And then when you put in your crops to grow your products, that's closer to the road, so that'll be kind of the first thing will be your vegetation and then your animals in behind. Is that correct?
Yes, our gardens are quite a bit closer to the road. Our gardens are, oh, sorry. There we are. So we have just gardens around here, right, John?
Yeah.
And a lot around as well back here. We want to keep the animals up here.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So while you're extending, the question I have is, so would you say that you have plans for one acre in vegetation or two acres in vegetation?
One? Yeah, probably not more than one. I mean, there, there's only a limited amount of flat benches we can use, and we have gardens already on a couple of them. So, yeah, probably say one.
And, okay, thank you. So the question I have to Mr. Strachan or Mr. Chabot is that we're in an R1 zone right now. To have one or one and a half or even two acres of garden is allowed in an R1 zone, so to stay with the garden, nothing would have to happen.
You can have as much vegetable garden in our R2 zone as you want.
There's no restriction on how you choose to landscape your yard. We generally regularly, unless, again, it's creating a problem in the neighborhood. We usually use, when people ask about the size of fire we're allowed to have in the yard, we generally tell them if you're using machinery, you've gone beyond just a backyard garden, or if you have staff, if you have people just beyond the people that are residing on the property.
Community plan amendment by law and zoning amendment by law. Is there any comments from the public for a second time?
I guess I do have one thing now, actually. The one thing in the application that it said is that there would be no smell. That's great and everything, but the issue is, is smell is not a measurable thing like noise or fence height or something like that. So how by law would be able to actually enforce the bylaws that are put through if it did become an issue because it's almost easier just to stop it before it happens than try and play back again with an unmeasurable obstacle.
Staff, got any comments on that?
I'm noxious smell. So you've said a violation of enforcement saying the noises, is it audible, is it noticeable, and is it defensible by that officer as being noxious? So we somewhat rely on the senses of our officers for observance as well as for sense as well as for sound to determine whether it's noxious or not, whether it can be disturbed or not.
So if it was determined, then what would happen?
It would be according to our noise and nuisance.
And if it's traced to animal part of it, then that would have to be removed, is that uh?
There would have to be action taken. I don't know if removal would be the first action normally in a lot of force that we pursue. A remedy to the situation would be an issue first.
Back up to the public for any comments for a second time.
Yes, sir. Jeff Acton, 46, Robson Avenue. Uh, your worship, council. First of all, I own the adjacent dwellbakers at property. We wrote a letter and you mentioned that you had been, three more letters of support had been given in since the noon hour that maybe you guys didn't have the opportunity to read. I was wondering if you would actually read those letters before you come to a decision?
That's up to council to decide, but once the public hearing is closed, there may be a motion on the floor to approve or deny or defer. I can't tell you what council will do, but we, we get the, up until noon, we cut it off electronically. Everybody gets the update and then the letters are brought here and the only part that's read is that if they're in supporter games. So that we know how many contacts have been made to City Hall in, if they're in favor or against.
Okay.
Okay? Does that answer your question?
I agree.
Any comments or questions from council, council brothers?
I have three questions of staff and I'm wondering whether it's appropriate now, your worship, to ask those questions or later on?
Absolutely, it is.
All right. First question is, has bearware been contacted with respect to that? Because I know in that particular area, I mean, it's so close to nature, it's so close to the park, the bears are around and I don't know whether that would be a problem or not.
They have a specific, referral wasn't sent out to them specifically, but we have not received any concerns from them from my opinion.
Number two?
Number two, the southern part of the property, I'm not too sure whether the gentleman that just stood up, is he the owner of that?
Yes, he is.
Is it developable? Is it, is it, can houses there?
Mr. Acton?
Yes, sir.
Is your 12 acres developable?
It is.
And third question, if there's a problem with respect to the farm and noises and smells and that thing, can it come back in this program, can it come back to council for a review and a change? Or are we, once we've made the decision to, to zone it that way, it doesn't stick?
Your worship, the council would have a number of regulatory tools to deal with issues arising from farm operations if this was approved. If it had a commercial component, council could choose depending on the particulars of the problem that it's creating, could enforce under its business licensing by law, under the most bylaws, Mr. Strachan notes, under if the use, say, the number of animals exceeded the permitted amount under the zoning by law. I'm not familiar with any provisions in a city by law yet that deal with nuisance such as odor, but council does have an authority to prescribe a class of activity, the emission of odor, of cluvius, soot, smoke from properties as being a nuisance and creating penalties to control that. If this zoning amendment was approved, council would have the opportunity, as it would with any property, at any time to initiate on their own a zoning amendment to make it a prohibited use. But so long as, once the use is established, if it's continued or if it's discontinued for a period of six months continuously, then that grandfathered use under the zoning that council might approve tonight would be extinguished. Otherwise, you can continue to maintain that operation as a law along with farming.
Counselor Salz.
Your worship, if I can ask, this is Lashinoff, a couple of questions in relation to placement of animals and crops on the property. When we, when we look at the highlighted area, that's your property there, just wondering about the animals, you mentioned a bench, is that near the back of the property? I know you mentioned so many meters in from the highway, but I'm just wondering, and just to address some of the concerns people have brought forward, if you indeed would be able to move your animals in the back area so that they can be moved around that back area, that's what I'm asking.
There's a, there's a natural bench about halfway up the property.
Okay.
That is probably, we guessed it's about 40 or 50 meters away from the property line. It's just a flat area that we thought would be appropriate for livestock. It's not right down by, I, I'm wondering if you reserve that, maybe it's right down at the front of the property line. Where am I? Oh, there we are. There we is in general. Right around here? Yeah, about halfway up. Yeah, right at the top of this road here is a natural bench that's up there.
You can see the top of the line. Yeah. And then, so when you, I have two more questions. When you, when you deal with the manure from the animals, you'll be composting that naturally on the property at some point?
Yes.
Would that be a distance further away from the road or have you decided at this point?
Well, at this point, we have two compost boxes that are a bit closer to the road, but we'd probably build another one up close to where the animals were kept because that would just be simpler and it's farther away from the neighbors.
And then when you put in your crops to grow your products, that's closer to the road, so that'll be kind of the first thing will be your vegetation and then your animals in behind, is that correct?
Yes, our gardens are quite a bit closer to the road. Our gardens are, go up, sorry. There we are. There's our, so we have just gardens around here, right, Tom?
Yeah.
And a lot around as well back here. We want to keep the animals up here.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
So while you're standing, the question I have is, so would you say that you have plans for one acre in vegetation or two acres in vegetation?
One? Yeah, probably not more than one. I mean, there, there's only a limited amount of flat benches we can use and we have gardens already on a couple of them. So yeah, probably say one.
And, okay, thank you. So the question I have to Mr. Strachan or Mr. Chabot is that we're in an R1 zone right now, to have one or one and a half or even two acres of garden is allowed in our one zone, so to stay with the garden, nothing would have to happen.
You can have as much vegetable garden in our two zone as you want.
There's no restriction on how you choose to landscape your yard. We generally regulate unless again it's creating a problem in the neighborhood. We usually use for people when they ask about the size of fire we're allowed to have in the yard, we generally tell them if you're using machinery, you've gone beyond just a backyard garden, or if you have staff, if you have people just beyond the people that are residing on the property, you're now crossing into commercial areas.
Thank you. Counselor Brothers?
For the question then to your worship and Mr. Strachan, with respect to the bees that are any, anything that prevents them from having bee hives and also chickens, how many chickens can you have on a piece of property like that?
I have to revert that to Mr. Strachan. It's on the title of the bylaw?
Yeah, on a residential property that is, has a single family dwelling, they can only have five chickens. What about bees? We have no, we're not allowed our beekeepers, but if it's a family use, I believe that's prohibited in that designation.
Okay. Agreed, counsel, was good right now? Going up to the public for a third and final time for any comments? Yes, come on up to the microphone.
Good afternoon, your worship and council. My name is Ariel Kussman. I'm a resident of 1613 Third Street West. I am not a homeowner of 1810 Mainly Road, but I have frequented that home for the past six years and spent a considerable amount of time and to continue spending a considerable amount of time at that residence, which is also directly facing the property. I have no qualms and I know that all members of the household have no qualms about smell and have no qualms about the volume of livestock and type of livestock or whatever kind of farming and horticulture the Lashinoffs happen to have. The homeowners of the residence have been there for at least the past 18 or 20 years and I, I know that we have, or strongly encourage that amount of farming. We've, they're lovely people, but I also don't think that the smell is as large of an issue as some of the other neighbors might be facing. They also have quite a bit of privacy with fencing and shrubbery that at least will obstruct, obstruct their viewpoint of the farm. We at 1810 Mainly Road do not, we don't have a fence that obstructs our view and as such, we have no opposition and hope that council and your worship will approve this because I think this is a landmark venture and landmark action that the household is taking not only to be self-sufficient, but also to provide for their community. And I think that this is something that we will hopefully see a lot more of in this community. Thank you.
Any final comments from anyone from the public?
Sorry, one more. Sorry, your worship, council. Being the adjacent landlord, a question came up as to whether that property was developable and it is, and given that it is, we still don't have any reservations about the application. That's anyhow, it's your decision.
Going back over to the public for a third and final time, yes, ma'am, come on up.
My name is Mary Lashinoff, I live at 1810 Mainly Road. Just wanted to point out that we wrote a letter in support. I handed it in last minute, so it might not be read, but as my brother has stayed in need with in that property for 22 years and for the last six to seven years since the Lashinoffs have lived there, we've had no concerns with them over noise complaints or anything to do with their property, with their gardening or any chickens that they're having pass. Frankly, we've had more noise complaints in our neighborhood over dogs because most people in our particular neighbors are, only dog goes two. And so I personally don't see how them having even a few livestock would match as far as noise complaints go with local pets. As far as the smell goes, from where they've indicated they are planning to house their livestock, I can't see the smell being a significant problem. As far as the, the amount of livestock they're planning on having, that doesn't seem unreasonable to me for the general consumption that family has for meat, if you consider how much meat you purchase at the grocery store at any given time. So I don't, I don't see any problem with their application and because.
Yep, come on up, girl.
Yeah, I just wanted to just confirm with Allison that you said you would be willing to add something on the covenant restricting roosters, is that correct?
Yes.
So I just wanted to clarify that, counsel.
I thought that was a city by law already, that there was no roosters in city lots.
But not, not for farming, farming or agriculture?
I'm Carol Mayer, I lived on 1825, just below the fence.
Come on in, go ahead.
There's several concerns for several different reasons. We don't have any pets, so we don't have a dog issue or anything like that. But bearware has asked me to chop down my tree because of the bears. Now, bears have come down through their property since I've lived there 25 years. They're part of our environment, we learn to live with it. And I realize what they're doing and I commend what they're doing, but they sent us a letter a week before the hearing saying that they want to just have a couple of chickens and they just want to have a little bit of this and a little bit of that. So that kind of contradicts what they're asking you for. So do they want to start out like this, which they're already clear to be, and then hopefully grow to that? I'm confused as to their intent of this property, like the letter that they sent us, and I wish I had brought it, but I didn't think it was necessary. It states a whole different picture. And when we first got to package, I know a lot of people in our area, it was confusing the way it was written and I realized that when you deal with legal terms, you have to outline all the amendments and all that sort of stuff. But ordinary people like us have a hard time reading through all that dry stuff. Some of us did, that's why we're here today. A lot of people thought it was for a secondary building, so they just dismissed it until we got talking about it. So my concern is, having lived there in that area for 27 years, 28 years now, it's a quiet residential area, a lovely place to raise kids. I know that most of us are all seniors that are in there now. I, I don't want to see it changed to a farming situation when out Mount Baby Way, it's all farms, out south, it's all farms. Those are the appropriate areas. To change a nice residential area into a farming area, I think would be wrong. If they can live within the bylaws to have their gardens and their bees, which I'm allergic to, but I, I live to live without as well, and have their five chickens, I don't have a problem with that because that's kind of what they stated in the letter that they sent us a week ago. So I truly am opposed to what they're proposing until I have a clear idea of what they actually want. Thank you.
Going back over to the public again for a third and final time, are there any comments on this public hearing?
Eric Dipo, 1815 Dallas Road. Just, most of what I have to say has already been said. I am opposed, I am opposed primarily to the covenant, which allows a full amount and I, as Carol mentioned, I get the sense that start small, but lead towards those numbers. And I think those two numbers are inappropriate. The bench pointed up there, it's a pretty small bench. Okay, so I spent a lot of time on that property before John Allison purchased it, so I know pretty well, there's a very limited area to let livestock in there. And currently they have chickens and they have gardens. So it's a pretty small area, especially when you get close to the boundary. Watershed, it runs through that area. So that, that's, that's my primary concern. The other point I'd like to make because it was brought up is the residents of Dallas Road have very little confidence in by law enforcement being able to deal with the situation. We, we have had the situation in that presence for the past two years, which was a noise issue and still is a noise issue. By law enforcement has been around numerous times, you have huge fight on you at City Hall and this is, and there's still a problem there. So now you're telling me you don't really know how to measure or determine things like odor. By law, by law officers are going to come up here and sniff, sniff the air and pick your dragon bin and then try to decide whether there's a problem or not. If there is a problem, I think we expect by law officers to be able to solve that problem, please. Okay?
Thank you. And the floor is open for a third and final time, if anybody wishes to speak on this public hearing. Any comments or questions from council? Looking for a motion to close this public hearing. Counselor Nixon and Counselor Orlando, all in favor, motion is carried.
Your worship, offering forward that official community plan amendment by law 2134 be read a third time.
Motion by Counselor Nixon, seconded by Counselor Salz. Discussion on the motion. Counselor Nixon.
Your worship, I'll start. When we do these public hearings and look at the impact from changing land usage, the letters go out to people who live within so much difference of proposed change. And those people are here today to speak to why they're opposed to the farm becoming a productive farm. But this one is more than just becoming a farm. It's, it's something that the community of Revelstoke has been working towards for the last four years or longer. And it has to do with goals that this council has set around food security, the food charter support, and the integrated sustainability support. So it's a real catch 22 and I think, I think the issue is not the chickens, it's not the vegetation, it's the livestock. And I think when people hear the word swine, pigs, they automatically think of smell. And then the balance to that is people have pigs for pests and there are other communities that struggle with people that have pigs for pests and then maybe common sense in their neighborhoods. So it's, it's a balancing act to move the community forward in sustainability and small farms. We've been planning communities in a 1960s, 1970s subdivision style for years and the young people are trying to lead us older people back to when growing their own food on the land was much more common to see within city limits. And, and we're hearing that from the young people in our community. And I am really informed as to listening to the people that have a vested impact in the funding needed of that property and looking at their property values and, and also looking at their quality of life, which is also one of the council's goals. So we have two council goals that we're measuring here and balancing. One is quality of life. You could argue either way for the proponent or the people speaking up for their neighborhood. And also just really looking at, this is, this is an opportunity for a sustainable farm to happen and everybody writes in letters of support of character, good character of these people that want to do this. But your worship, this, this is a really tough one.
I'm trying to get an indication of which way you're going on this and I still don't. Counselor Brothers?
I, I agree entirely with what Counselor Nixon just said. Again, I mean, these issues that come before us are always a balancing act and they're a very difficult balancing act. I applaud the initiative of food security, I, I think that's really important. But the more I listen and the more I look at this, the more I tend to feel that great food security, but this is just not the right spot. It's, you know, if it were a little bit more isolated away from, from developable land where we're going to have subdivisions, houses, that type of thing, it would be great. But I'm really concerned about the livestock issue and the fact that, that yes, even to the south, if it's developed, you're going to have a farm. And we don't think the farm was, was far enough away and isolated enough so that we could say, well, you know, there's a subdivision and far away, there's a farm. I can see that, but I'm just concerned about how close it is and how close to the road it is and across the street. So, I mean, I, I'm balancing as well, but I'm tending to balance toward the same note of this, of this.
Well, I'm not as, I'm not concerned, as concerned about the developed property of the south because people that are moving into that area, if that's what happens, knows full well what's in the neighborhood. But what we're doing here, which is, is a concern for the neighborhood, is making a big change in the use of this piece of property and an existing neighborhood around it that is somewhat accepting and somewhat not accepting and because it's a, it's a big unknown to them. The reason why I ask the question about what you can do with, with an R2 zone that's already there is I see that 90% of what they want to do is already available to them in an R2 zone. And I guess that's the way that I am leaning is to leave things the way they are. The livestock and probably heavy machinery is probably the concern with the neighborhood, livestock being number one. And I think that, that we're being asked to make, to introduce too big of a change into an existing neighborhood. So that's unfortunate, the way that I feel. I, I agree with the whole food security and the initiative, I, I think it's great. I, I have concerns in this area, so I will be voting against it. Counselor Orlando?
Yeah, growing up, I spent a fair amount of time living at my grandparents' house, which was on a hobby farm in subdivision, more or less. It started out as a hobby farm in a rural area and then subdivision showed up later on. We had farms and victory gardens and sheep and horses, depending on their life cycle, how long they lasted for, all kinds of animals over the years. And my experience there, and of course we went back for Christmases and lots of visits, is a small hobby farm that's run well and it wasn't super intensively managed, but you know, it was run okay. It didn't have smell, didn't have a, a big issue. We, I would never, have never heard anyone in my family saying, hey, you know, let's not go over Christmas because there's all this stink out there. It didn't, didn't. When I look at the property up there, that's four acres as, as I understand, and the bench, which you can see from the little papa lines there, is not very big. Like, I, I guess I wonder how many animals, like if you're talking sheep, for example, you can even have because they feed a lot and there's not a lot of, not a lot of space up there for them to graze, depending on how you're feeding them, if you're going to feed them otherwise, it's going to be expensive. But I, I guess I, I, you know, I support the direction our community is going in as laid out in our official community plan, which is noted here in the staff report and I'm looking for ways to support that. When I read the actual wording of the document there, it says, you know, this type of use is appropriate for rural areas of the edge of town. And I guess, you know, when I look at this property, I sort of see that's it to some extent. I guess though, when I really listen to what the neighbors who spoke in opposition to this were saying, it's that, you know, they're really concerned about the smell and that's the main concern. There seems to be provision for visual barrier as well as the 10-meter setback for farming use. And I'm, I'm just not convinced that it's going to be a big problem. I look to see, you know, I like to give people the benefit of the doubt. There's quite a few letters speaking in support of, of this, this pair and what they're doing and what they've done in the past. And, you know, theoretically, yeah, if it was smelled really bad and it was causing blocking orders, you know, that would be a problem, but I'm not too sure if this is going to be. you know, that would be a problem, but I'm not too sure if this is going to be the case. I'd like to speak in support of this application. And also, under the way that this change is outlined, it's in Section 219 covenant that actually lists the number of allowable animals. That is something that is, as I understand from speaking with staff today, can be governed under the density provision. So if there was a change that would need to be made to make it more acceptable to the neighbors, that can be done now with the approval of the applicant. So council could, for example, say, hey, 50 chickens, that's too much, or a dozen pigs, that's too much. There's an opportunity to change the wording. I think we can, you know, we can find something that works there. And let's, let's see what other counselors think about that.
Counselor Salz?
Your Worship, now I guess is the point where I spell out my previous experience. So all council members, none of you will be aware that I used to have a hobby farm in a setting very similar to this, where I actually raised sheep and had a subdivision nearby. And we had a few chickens. But then my parents had a farm, and on the farm, they had some pigs. And not very far away from our home were the pigs. And they had up to 10 or 12 pigs at a time. Their chickens ranged anywhere from 50 to 75 at a time. We couldn't smell pigs because they were careful in a way that made the farming sustainable. Even though it didn't work that nice when you went out there as a pig farmer. But there was no issue with smell. There was no issue with the chickens with the smell. So basing that on my, my previous experience, I'm going to support this going forward. I don't, I know that some of the neighbors are really concerned about smell and numbers. And my experience, if it's done properly, this isn't going to be an issue. And I asked the que-